Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, May 16, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bay City Board of Commissioners to order. Could you please take the roll?
Neimik?
Here.
Benajak?
Here.
Mallett?
Here.
Herrick?
Here.
Radke?
Here.
Foyer?
President?
Begic.
Mr. Begic, we would be absent and excused. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation, followed by the pleasure of allegiance.
We come before you this afternoon asking once again that you will bless this session of the County Commission, be with this board this day, and guide them so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
Amen. First up will be the Benazov, 1823, and 5223. What should we approve?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post-motion carries. Next, agenda approval. Is there any changes to the agenda? It sounds like none. I like it. Thank you. We'll move on to citizen input. So anybody from the audience that would like to speak before the board, please come forward, and we'll be happy to listen to you right now. Nobody? Nobody? Okay. So we do have one person on, and we have Commissioner Begic, who's recovering from surgery. He would like to... He's not there? No? No. Okay. Maybe he wants to talk. He'll do it at public comment at the end, but not now. So we're going to move on from citizen input to petitions and communications. Presentation by Phil Icke on the first quarter report of Hay Bay City.
Good evening, everybody. This thing's on, right? Yeah, you can hear me okay? Cool. My name's Phil Icke, and I'm the Director of Marketing and Placemaking for Hay Bay City, and I work alongside Marlena Cork, who's the Director of Workforce Development. And this program is administered by the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, of which Megan Saman is the President and CEO. This is your first quarterly report. We'll be giving these quarterly reports this year and next year just to loop everybody in on how things are going, what we can do better, what we're doing awesomely, get your ideas, all those other things. And so let's jump in. Oops. Got a little click cap there. Slide one is the marketing overview, and a couple highlights here, some numbers. Really important numbers are down at the bottom, the totals. So in column one, the followers, subscribers, those are directly connected audience. So obviously, we reach more than 8,000 folks, but those are people who have subscribed, follow us on social media, things like that. So we're approaching that 10,000 mark, which is awesome. The second column there, impressions, that means times that a piece of content from Hay Bay City has been viewed. So it could be an email, it could be a post on social media, and at the end of March, we had crossed the 1.42 million view mark. So that is awesome. That is very, very cool. Driving about 40,000 views to the website, and most of those views are directly to the job board, which is great. We'll talk more about that in a second. The next three columns, engaged users, engagements, and engagement rate. This is the number of times that somebody has seen a piece of content and liked it so much that they forwarded it on to a friend, or they commented on it, or shared it, or liked it. This is an important number because it's a way that we evaluate the quality of content. If we produce a high-quality amount of content, it's more likely that people will engage with it. Like, "I love this story. I love that photo. I want to share it with my friends." And so on Facebook, our engagement rate is 22.02%. The average on Facebook is .75%, so we're currently operating about 29 times greater than average, which is a great sign. On Instagram, we're about a percentage point under, and so we'll be funneling Instagram-specific content there to bump that number up. That last column, views and listens, part of this effort is the podcast, telling the Bay County story through the form of a video/audio podcast, and at the end of March, that was either viewed or listened to 10,512 times. So we're off to a running start. A lot of excitement behind this effort, and that is encouraging. This slide, it just gives you an overview of the stories that we've covered so far, so stories of businesses, nonprofits, individuals, from Pinconning, Essexville, Auburn, Bay City, various districts in Bay City, and the like. Also on here are workforce development, educational pieces. So Marlena and I'll sit down and talk about how to write a great resume, how to write a great job description, how to search for a career that is right for you, trying to grassroots develop the workforce in that way through an educational piece. In the next couple quarters, we're going to focus on really expanding the reach of those stories to places like Pinconning, and Cockholland, and Lindwood, as well as to various individuals and things like that. This is one of the trickiest parts of this effort because we essentially tell four stories a month in a county of 103,000 people. So it's really a learning process to figure out how do we really represent accurately our community while also highlighting stories that have the greatest chance to encourage people to either stay or to move here. And so we're looking forward to this improving gradually over time as we kind of crack that code. A lot of numbers coming at you, so sometimes it's helpful to think, "Oh, how is everybody else doing?" And so I created a list of similar efforts to Hay Bay City from across Michigan, and then a couple across the country. Facebook is the only platform right now that'll allow this kind of comparative data gathering. I can't pull it from Instagram. I can't pull it... I can, and I will be reaching out to those efforts to get information directly from them. But for now, let's take a look at Facebook. This is organized, or it's ranked based on page likes. So you see us, we're all the way down at the bottom, and that makes a lot of sense because we are by far the youngest effort out of this entire list. We've been public for about three months. The next youngest effort is six years old, and that's St. Joseph, Missouri. The rest of the efforts, specifically throughout Michigan, are twice as old as that. So you see 13 years, 14 years, 15 years. So they've been around for a while. Really encouraging here, though, if you look at that middle column, page-like change over the course of that week that we evaluated, 402, so we're the fastest-growing page out of all of these. If you were to use updated numbers, like today, we would be beating No Atlanta, so that's Atlanta, Georgia's effort, their relocation effort. Yeah, that Atlanta, Georgia, which is awesome. Southwest Michigan, we would also be surpassing, and then Imagine Pittsburgh, which is Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania's effort as well. So that's awesome considering that we're three months old. Imagine Pittsburgh is 15 years old, and we're already crushing them. So that's very encouraging. A centerpiece to this entire effort, of course, is the job board. We use the True Job software. One part of it uses artificial intelligence to scrape open job positions from local employers. The other part of it allows Bay County employers to create a job position and post it directly to the board. So in that first column, we've had 41 employers sign up. We've had 289 jobs posted. Those jobs have been viewed almost 10,000 times, which is a very encouraging number. That means that we've created something that people are looking for and they need. If we did not have that number of views, if it was just kind of crickets on the job board page, we'd be in a world of trouble because people aren't even looking for jobs here. And that's a big boulder to push. But the fact that we have as many views specifically on the job board is great. On the job board, apply clicks. So people that are so intrigued that they wanted to apply to that job almost 100 times over the course of those three months. We've had three job applications sent through True Job, and four jobs filled. You might be looking at those numbers and say, "Well, if three people applied and four of the jobs filled, there's a little discrepancy there." And that brings us to really our first challenge in that when we use artificial intelligence to automatically scrape job positions, especially from high-volume employers, think GM, SK Siltron, McLaren Bay Region, some of those, what happens is people find the job on Hay Bay City, they click, "I want to apply to that job," and that link will take them directly to those employers' websites. Once they do that, we can't track them. Hay Bay City might have brought them that job. It might have gotten them to apply to that job, but there's no way for us to know because the software doesn't track. And so that's one of the improvements going forward that we have to address, is how do we get every single employer on that job board enabling True Job tracking so that we can give you accurate numbers? Otherwise, you'll see what's happening right now is that we'll chronically under-report the number of jobs that Hay Bay City has helped fill. And we know that those jobs have been filled both through True Job, but also through word of mouth. And here's an employer testimonial, one. "Graduating student from SVSU saw our open position on Hay Bay City, applied, and she just accepted our offer. Her hometown is two hours away, but will be moving to Bay City." So encouraging, one, that we're reaching into a really critical demographic, young adults in college looking for a career, and then, two, we have persuaded her to move to this area. And I've met her. She is absolutely delightful. Testimonial two, kudos on your success of Hay Bay City. It really shows right now with our open position. "I have had better luck in a shorter timeframe with applicants through there than any other avenue I have tried in the past. Because of Hay Bay City, we hired a Bay City native who moved away but wanted to move back. I really appreciate everything you do with this and for our community in general. You are a true gem." And that thanks, of course, goes to you guys as well because without you, this effort would not exist. But also very cool because this is a woman that had grown up here, moved away for school or work, but really wanted to move back. We call these people boomerangs, and we got one. Testimonial three. "I'm a graduating senior at SVSU. As I've only spent a few years here in the Saginaw area and have been glued to campus, I haven't got to explore what the Great Lakes Bay region and get as involved as I wanted to. I have become intrigued with the area and how interesting and unique it is. I'm a fan of your podcast and thought you'd be a good person to reach out to about getting involved in the Great Lakes Bay region. I hope to hear back from you soon, and thank you for your time." So the kind of content that we're creating is great because it is directly interacting, again, with those young, soon-to-be professionals, young adults that are looking, saying, "Where should I work? Where should I live?" And our content is reaching them. So that is a great sign. What we're doing well, what we need to do better, and some opportunities. So in that first column, the attention, positive feedback, and the rate of growth, great. Number two, creating a high amount of positive community relationships. This sounds kind of warm and fuzzy, like, "Oh, why is this..." Like, it's just nice. But so critical to this effort because employers have to trust us. The community has to see us as an advocate for the community and its future. And so having and building these positive relationships is absolutely critical, especially at the start here. And I put in a note that people love Marlena. She is an absolutely delightful person, all-day, everyday meeting with schools, and employers, and individuals, trying to really build this workforce pipeline. And she is marvelous. She's exactly the kind of person that we need helping with this effort. She's friendly, she's nice, she's personable, she's got a great character, and she's an incredibly hard worker. So shout out to Marlena. Third one there, cultivating a relatively high amount of traffic to the website, specifically the job board. We've got people looking at jobs, looking at the website, which is a great thing. Middle column, what we need to do, better audience growth. You're going to see this every single quarterly report because the faster we grow an audience and the larger that it grows, the more magic can happen. Followers, we need them. Email subscribers, we need them because those are direct connections to those people, and that is really, really important. Second one there, continue improving the editorial calendar to reflect communities, demographics, businesses, employers, and citizens in a way that aligns with the mission of attraction and retention. And there's an art to that, and we will be getting more and more artistic as we go. Third one there, more employers need to enable True Job tracking. We already talked about that. Last one in that column, how can Hay Bay City support positive retention-focused experiences in the youth? We as adults speak in a different language than kids. What attracts us are jobs, economy, housing, nightlife, businesses, outdoor activities, all of those things. If I were to go to a fifth grader and say, "We've got a low cost of living here in Bay County," they don't care about those kinds of things. So how do we start those roots? It's through positive experiences. Are they having fun here? Do they feel like they have the attention of the community? Do they feel cared for? Are we giving them opportunities to contribute? One idea that we're floating is having a community mural that grade-school kids come in, and it's almost a paint-by-numbers, and every time they walk down that street, "I painted that, Mom." Important to us. It's like, oh, it's kind of like an art project. To them, it means everything. So that's where our brain is headed right now with kids. Opportunities, we talked about St. Joseph. Or maybe we didn't talk about St. Joseph. St. Joseph, Missouri, back on this list. I'll show you this because this is kind of an interesting window to the future. Up at the top is "Made with Uncommon Character," that's St. Joseph, Missouri's outreach effort. They are by far the most engaged and most popular platform of this list. And what's great for us about that is that they use a similar philosophy as we do, human faces and human stories to communicate the message about Bay County. And so if there was a way that we could look into the future and say, "If we kept doing this for five years, where would we be at?" St. Joseph gives us a great opportunity to say, "We are on the right path. We can have that same level of success if we just sustain the effort and stay the course." Last one in that, opportunities. ARPA funding is going to allow for a substantial advertising push after we test and identify the most effective ads. I can't just throw $2,000 at an advertisement and say, "Okay, I did my job." We've got to test different pictures. It's called A/B testing. I'll use one picture for this ad, I'll use another picture for this ad, and I'll throw $100 at it. I take the highest-performing ad, and I say, "Okay, that's the picture that works. Now we're going to change the writing. Okay, the writing was better over here. Now I found my optimized ad, and that's when I can start throwing money at that advertisement." Otherwise, we're just burning cash, and we don't want to do that. So that's one of the next steps. Next step after that, balancing content creation and audience creations. We're spending a lot of time producing a high amount, a high volume of quality content. Some of that time, though, has to go to audience creation, engaging with people, and promoting the content. And so we're going to experiment with that over the next two quarters. Improve the relocation content and resources page on the website. We have one right now, but we really want to spruce that up, make it a comprehensive tool for somebody saying, "Hey, I'm interested in moving here. What are all the things I need to know?" And so we'll be adding to that page as we go throughout the year. In that second column, exciting, yesterday, we signed an agreement with CitySpark, which is a company out of San Francisco, and they use artificial intelligence to create a single county-wide community calendar of every single public event that will be happening from now to six months out. It's also filterable, so I could say, "I want only Pinconning events, Winona Park events, live music at Jake's," which is awesome. During public engagement, this was one of the things I kept hearing from people. "I want one place where I can go to see everything that is happening," and we're going to have it. We're going to have it on the Hay Bay City website. So one, it's a tool for the community. Two, it gives those outside a community a snapshot of what kind of events do we actually have here, and it's going to drive a lot of traffic to the website. Encourage more employers to enable tracking. We talked about that. And then increase the number of employers using the True Job platform. The more employers we have using it, the more jobs we have available, the more people we can get hired here in Bay County. Before I ask for any questions, Marlena wants to give you a quick update of something that just happened.
Again, good afternoon, and thank you. Marlena Cork, Director of Workforce Development with the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. As we're talking about talent retention, we need to be very intentional about that. You've heard me say that before. So what we're doing, my friend Mike View, and myself, and Renee Amick have brought together, again, the Business and Education Partnership. So we're talking about talent retention in Bay County. We're getting all of the superintendents and members from our business community together so that way we can come up with programs that are center of focus for our K-12 students. Programs that are going to be focused on what our business community needs, from those social skills that our children now are lacking, those soft skills, and making sure that the curriculums that are in the school districts are matching with what the employers need. So that's a big thing that we're getting ready to get started now. There are more programs that are going to be coming down the pipeline the upcoming school year. So I wanted to give more of an update on how are we focusing on that talent to keep them here, but we in letting them know what's going on. And we're not just focusing on our high school students. Like I said, we're looking at our middle school and high school so that way we can bring appropriate programs that's going to be focused on, you know, the future of the job market, what to do, how do we need to act, and how do we make sure that we're keeping them here in Bay County. So I just wanted to give that brief update. All of our partners are excited to come to the table. It's good to see both sides, our business and education community, coming together and working on one accord. So more updates will be coming in the future months. So thank you again for your time and our presentation. Is there any more information I'd like to add, Phil?
If you have questions or anything like that, if it's appropriate to talk about that now, I'd love to...
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank Phil, and of course, Marlena and Megan, for appearing before the board and all of us today, and also congratulate all of you and the team on a spectacular launch, I think, for Bay City. I hear a lot of comments, and I've been viewing, you know, what you've been posting, and I think it's really a good, positive way to promote Bay City and Bay County. And I want to thank you also for letting the commissioners know, and, you know, we were the first to commit the $560,000 of ARPA money toward... We didn't know what the name would be, but Hay Bay City. And I talked to Phil, and I said, "Phil, you know, it's a joint. It's Bay City-Bay County." And he reminded me that, you know, people who are near Detroit are from Detroit. So you basically, you know, Bay City, we're proud of Bay City, too. It's our hometown, it's the county seat, and that's what most people from around the state think of. They think of Bay City, they're also thinking of Bay County. But I want to compliment you on covering a lot of, you know, businesses and individuals outside the city limits as well, especially the outreach to Northern Bay County and Pinconning, and Bager Township, and Williams Township, and Auburn. And so I guess I'd just say that, you know, we appreciate what you've done in a very short span of time, and hopefully it's going to, you know, pay dividends as we move forward in the future by retaining our young people, but also attracting young talent to Bay County. And as Phil mentioned, and Marlena, you've touched on, you know, relatively low crime rate, you know, relatively low cost of living, and a great environment with people that have each other's backs here in Bay County and Bay City. So that was just my comments, not a question, but thanks for the great presentation.
Thank you.
I would like to know when the community calendar would be coming out.
Agreement was signed yesterday, and I heard from Joe from CitySpark, and it's four to six weeks. So I'd love for it to be sooner, but I'm still hitting the kind of that window of summer events and things like that. And it also gives us time to promote it and get some buzz around it as well. So I'm hoping for four weeks as opposed to six weeks, but four to six weeks.
And I think about this as compared to our communities had other community calendars in the past. What makes us different is the fact that we scrape from other things. So we're not reliant on somebody necessarily going in to add things all the time. It has the ability to scrape from other sites, which is really what makes it more dynamic than what we've seen in our community in the past. See, there's been multiple other initiatives that ultimately never really came and stayed for the long term, and this is different.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So I just want to say that, you know, when we started this endeavor about a year ago, Commissioner Radke and myself were the ones that were the two left of that. But, you know, everybody got on board, and nobody really knew what to expect. I think that's the... It was the unknown, you know? So we were jumping in. We jumped in, and we jumped in with, you know, with a lot of money, and didn't know what was on the other side. So far, you know, in the short time that, you know, I know it takes a while, and it did take a while to get everything up to speed, and that's normal, but the results seem to be speaking for themselves. And I know this summer, you know, as we come into the high-volume season in downtown here, you know, I mean, this can be... You guys probably do have a lot to do, and there'll probably be a lot on the website from what goes on in downtown because, you know, as we... Most of us get out once in a while, we see people from out of town, and I just saw a lady from the pier Saturday over at the DoubleTree Hotel, and she said, "I've never been to Bay City." She says, "This is amazing." She's 70 years old, never been to Bay City in her life, which is amazing in itself. But, you know, but everybody says when people come here, they love what they see. We just have to make sure they see it, you know? And I think that's what you're doing now, that's something that's never happened before. And, you know, and I... Well, like I said, it was... We really flipped the coins on this one, and, you know, it looks like an endeavor that is going to pay dividends going forward. And I thank you, I'm sure Commissioner Radke thanks you, too, and all the other commissioners that were here, everybody who was before us, that, you know, believe in... And everyone here believes in Bay City and Bay County because that's why we're here. And thank you for what you've done so far, and we only look forward to what you're going to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I need a motion to receive.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Item B, from the Bay County Treasury, the liquid tax for closure report. Motion to receive, please.
Motion to receive.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. From the City of Bay City, application for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for Bay Carbon Incorporated for $1 million. Motion to receive.
I'll move it.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. We're off to reports, resolutions of committees. Commissioner Neimik.
Thank you. Resolution number 2023-85, revised process to fill vacancies. Move to adopt.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-86, legal secretary vacancy in the prosecutor's office. To adopt.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-87, agreement number DFA 24-09003, home aide position, family support specialist, 2023-2024, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Move to adopt.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Number four. Resolution number 2023-88, authorization of appraisals and build-out analysis for Community Health and Human Services Center location sites with amended authorization for acquisition through the Health Department.
Support.
Move to adopt.
Then we have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-89, grant award for in-home services, VCW providers from Region 7, AAA Department on Aging. Move to adopt.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-90, budget adjustment for purchase of the golf course chemical sprayer, $16,000, recreation and facilities. Move to adopt.
Support.
Discussion. Sitting on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-91, rescission of resolution 2023-38, re-MRMA rectify cybersecurity vulnerabilities grant, information systems. Move to adopt.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Number 2023-92, MMRMA rectify cybersecurity vulnerabilities grant, information systems. Move to adopt.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2023-93, agreement with Cisco and Port 53, cloud security managed services, information services. Move to adopt. Move to adopt.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Number 2023-94, Vacancies That Are Budgeted, 911 Central Dispatch, Office of Criminal Defense, and the Department on Aging for a Part-Time Personnel. Move to adopt. Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Neemek. Commissioner Benaschak, would you like to do the next under B, please?
Ah, yes. Number 2022-95, Reports of County Executive for April. Motion to receive.
Support. Support.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Number 2023-96, St. Paul Lutheran Church, 175th Year of Service Anniversary. Motion to adopt.
All in favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Benaschak. Next, Reports of County Officials and Departments, the County Executive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to give an update to the board. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with WTA Architects based in Lansing relative to an assessment on where our pool stands. We know pretty much it's in terrible shape. It's probably, the walls have been collapsing and it's badly in need of replacing. But we'd like to have them do an assessment in terms of going forward. If we were to downsize the pool, what, you know, a reasonable cost would be if we could reduce that cost. And I want to thank the board for previously setting aside the land where the pool currently resides so that if we can put the funding together from private sources or grants, that we might be able to once again offer a community pool for the teaching of, you know, public swimming classes as well as competitive swimming opportunities for those who love to compete in swimming events. And we'll be meeting with Commissioner Benaschak and Commissioner Molet tomorrow along with the leaders, and I think two of them are here today, speaking on behalf of the residents of Bay County who strongly support the continuation of a community pool. But we'll see, you know, what prospects we have in trying to attract private support as well as, you know, grant funding that would allow us to do that. And we appreciate the group being very reasonable in their approach and look forward to working with them. And also, I want to say that I had the opportunity to visit Gwanda Getka, our great chairman, on Friday at Bay Shores, and he's doing well. And he was in good spirits, and he's very anxious to resume his regular schedule. Maybe, you know, he won't be getting around quite as well as he used to for, you know, maybe a couple of months while he recuperates from what is always when you have hip surgery, it's a major surgery, and it takes a little while to get back on both your feet. But his spirits were high, and he's indicated he's monitoring all of our activities here in Bay County government from his room as he recuperates. And he should be out, I think, and Lindsay might correct me, but I think about another week, he should be out and about, and we'll be seeing him back on the job. And then also just to report that our Clear the Shelter event was successful. We adopted 17 animals, about four dogs and the rest cats. And one dog in particular, a young female, was there a year and a half, and she was adopted. Very sweet dog. So it's great that, you know, sometimes they're not always the first selected, but she found a loving home and as did the other animals. So that's always a great event, and the community continues to support it. And I'm pleased to say, and speaking with Liv, that, you know, we've really whittled down the waiting list for families that are, you know, waiting to have their dogs be taken in so they can be readopted. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect, perfect. Are there any commissioner comments? No. Nothing. Perfect. Unfinished business. New business.
There's one.
Public input.
Yep.
We have Commissioner Begic coming on. Here he is.
There he is.
Yes, I was having some problems with the first hookup that I had, so I went to my phone. So I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'd like to thank you for the vote on the 175th anniversary of St. Paul Lutheran Church. We'll be having a ceremony on June 25th at about noon. You're all invited. We'll have some presentations and guest speakers at that time. So keep that on your calendar. And thanks for the kind words from Commissioner Barsha. And I plan to get out Thursday or Friday. I'm working some things out with my therapist, physical therapist, to get out a couple more days. So I'll be back in action.
Good.
See you next week.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, I have a question for Kristen under miscellaneous. How's the golf course doing?
Great. I mean, we've only been open four weeks now. Greens look great, leagues are started. Everything's going great.
I mean, everything, I mean, I just hear a lot of good, I still, I've heard a lot of good things about the last year now, but I know they just, my play must be really picking up now.
Yeah, really, I jokingly say the best thing that happened to the golf course was COVID. It's obviously a joke. But really, our play has been up since about COVID. By over, we were typically hitting about 22,000 rounds a year. We're up to 27,000, 28,000 rounds a year. We are slammed with outings. Every single weekend is booked with outings. And our transient play has really been up since about COVID hit. So things are going really well. My staff out there is amazing. Jeremy has done really great things with the greens and the grounds, and everything just looks really good out there. So we couldn't be happier.
And I'll just add, I, too, receive a lot of compliments from what the staff's doing out there. And I know what really made a difference was not taking out, you know, the money out of the golf receipts. Just so the listeners on the Bay City, or Bay County TV, watching the board meetings as well as our newer commissioners, by, the Bay County Golf Course gets no tax subsidies. It's self-supporting. And in the past, as Kristen had gone over the numbers, nearly a million dollars was taken, golf receipts were taken out of the golf course budgets over a period of 10 years. And that money was not reinvested back into improving the grounds, the fairways, and the greens. And part of the big problem was not adequate irrigation. And also, the decommissioning of the Conwood Oak Plant, which allowed us to sell 100,000 cubic yards of clay, which created a 33 million gallon pond. We now have a huge amount of water. And I understand that Jeremy and the staff make sure that the fairways and the greens are irrigated about seven hours a night. So that has really made a difference, wouldn't you agree, Kristen? And I think, you know, with the public, yeah, you know, what about the golf course? It doesn't get taxpayer subsidies. It's self-supporting. And as I've told the golfers, bring your friends, your neighbors, and your family. The more people that golf, the more revenue we have. The more revenue we have, the more will be reinvested into improving the grounds of the golf course.
I think that's the biggest thing, when we started reinvesting back in the golf course, you know, rather than trying to figure out where money is going to come from to invest at the golf course. So that made a big difference. And like I said, everybody, I don't know, anybody, anybody say anything bad about the golf, everybody just says it's the best place in Bay County to golf. It's all hands down.
We definitely believe that. Best place in Bay County to golf, for sure.
Yeah, well, thank you. That's my miscellaneous. Any announcements? Listen.
Well, I'm not sure if it's announcements or miscellaneous.
It is not because it's just Meg.
I wanted to share that Commissioner Molet and myself went to the police memorial service today on the property of, or the sheriff's, front of the sheriff's office. And it was the Bay City Public Safety, the Michigan State Troopers, and the Sheriff's Patrol. And it was, it was just wonderful. And it was about 45 minutes, the memorial service. And so it was very, very good, and so we enjoyed it. Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. And I'm sorry we don't have Commissioner Begic here because he always has at least one announcement for us. So I kind of miss that. You know, you get used to something, you miss it when it's not here. And I do miss it. Okay, so on to appointments. In June, we have Library Board, one five-year term. In October, Land Bank Authority, two three-year terms. And Bay County Department of Human Services, one three-year term. And the Jury Commission, one six-year term. And December, Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee, one four-year term. And Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms. The Districts, one, three, five, and then seven. Is there a need for a closed session today, ma'am?